Hello everybody and a very good morning to you. Thank you so much for joining us here on the Cork Harbour Economy webinar. My name is Jonathan Healy and I'm going to be your host for what promises to be a very informative and interesting conversation centred around the immense opportunities that we are fortunate enough to have right here on our doorstep in Cork Harbour and its surrounding areas. It's a place that's full of energy, that's full of ambition, determination and, most importantly, enterprise. Over the next little while, we're going to hear from a number of speakers on how we can realise the true potential of Cork Harbour. We're going to hear how policy is being shaped and formed and we're going to hear what role you might play. My job here today is to ask some of your questions and we're going to have an extensive Q and A session at the end of the webinar. And please, if you're on social media this morning, use the hashtag CorkHarbourEconomy. But without further delay, let's crack on and I'd like to welcome our first speaker, the Mayor of the County of Cork, councillor Mary Linehan Foley.
As Mayor of the County of Cork, it is my pleasure to welcome you to our Cork Harbour Economy event. Throughout its 1400 year history, Cork Harbour has been a gateway for Ireland to the world and today it connects us to all corners of the earth through global shipping routes. This has attracted global leaders in a diverse variety of industries, which has in turn benefited the residents of Cork Harbour, Cork County and indeed the nation as a whole. This is reflected in the region's GDP per capita, which is consistently higher than the national average. The key to success so far has been the collaboration between private and public sectors and the vibrant, resilient and welcoming harbour community. This community is spread throughout metropolitan, rural and coastal areas and covers a variety of sectors, including agriculture, tourism, education, heritage, pharmaceutical, chemical, ICT and more. The world is slowly emerging from the most significant global event in living memory. Private, public, local and international sectors have undergone substantial change with new priorities, values and concerns rising to the fore. What does this mean for Cork Harbour? Its unique economic ecosystem is tied to all sectors and as a hub in a global network of trade and commerce, local and global are intrinsically linked. Today we will hear from leaders in Cork County Council on the challenges and opportunities that will shape the future of this vibrant region. We will learn about future collaborative approaches and interventions that will secure this region's future as a global economic powerhouse and home to a thriving community in the years to come. Thank you all for joining us. I will now hand you over to our host, Jonathan Healy.
Mayor, thank you very much indeed. Now, I know lots of you have already started to submit your questions, but let's keep the conversation going on the Cork Harbour Economy. You can tweet us, the hashtag is CorkHarbourEconomy and I'm going to put your questions to our panel a little bit later this morning. But now we'll hand over to our next speaker, the Minister for Public Expenditure and Reform, Michael McGrath TD.
Good morning everyone. I am delighted to have the opportunity to address you today on a subject that is particularly close to my heart. Growing up in Passage West, the importance of our wonderful natural harbour has always been very clear to me. While we have made great strides in recent years, I am firmly of the view there remains huge untapped potential in the harbour region for further economic development and diversification, delivering long-term sustainable jobs. We can also do more to exploit the amenity potential of the harbour. The blue economy can take many forms. As we emerge from the global pandemic, it is more important than ever that we focus on the engines of our economic growth. As a small, open economy dependent on international trade for our prosperity, supporting what is already a thriving harbour economy will be critical to our economic recovery. Central to the harbour economy, of course, is the Port of Cork and we can be very proud of having a tier one port handling 19% of all seaborne trade in the state and the relocation of the port's container terminal business to Ringasgiddy is a further significant development in its long history. There is a growing realisation that central to our wellbeing in the years ahead will be ensuring we transition to a more resilient and sustainable economy. Through balanced regional development, clustered and compact growth and improved connectivity, I firmly believe that we can deliver on our twin objectives of economic prosperity and environmental sustainability. This will be a major theme of the forthcoming revised National Development Plan and the plan will have a major focus on the green economy. For the first time ever, my department is mapping at a high level the expected climate and environmental impacts that government capital investments will have. This will demonstrate to the public the environmental consequences of the investment decisions that the government is making. The plan will also detail how it aligns with international best practice on adherence to long-term emission reduction goals, factoring in resilience to climate impacts, slowing biodiversity loss and increasing the circularity of supply chains. I commend Cork County Council on its submission to the review of the NDP, which sets out its case for investment to unlock the full potential of key assets in the Cork Harbour area, including the city keys and Tibbly Renewal, Marina Point, Cork Dockyard, Cove, Ringasgiddy, Whitegate and Battery. I know that the council believe that the harbour economy has the potential to double its economic output by 2040. There is obviously already a vibrant pharmaceutical industry, but as the submission to the review of the NDP by Cork County Council suggests, building new clusters of excellence will be critical to securing the long-term future of the harbour economy. Building on pharmaceutical expertise to explore opportunities in biotech and medtech is an obvious path, but there are also opportunities to take advantage of Cork's expertise in energy. Cork was the first region in the country to see indigenous natural gas brought ashore through Conseil, Ballycotten and Seven Heads. There are several electricity generation plants in the region and some of the first large-scale auto production projects have taken place in the county. The Marine and Renewable Energy Institute based in UCC, whose research work is playing a central role in underpinning the government's new climate action plan, provides world-leading research support. This energy expertise in Cork is critical to our ability to meet our climate targets. Ireland has been very successful in deploying renewable electricity. A record-breaking 43% of all electricity consumed in Ireland last year came from renewables, predominantly from onshore wind. Indeed, Ireland is a world leader when it comes to onshore wind generation at this point. However, a diverse range of renewable technologies will be needed now to meet our climate commitments. Developing Ireland's offshore wind industry will be essential for delivering our target of 70% renewable electricity by 2030. The offshore environment presents an opportunity to harness a more powerful and consistent wind resource while also supporting new skilled jobs. And so the programme for government established a goal of five gigawatts of offshore wind energy by 2030 and commits to developing a longer term plan to harness a potential 30 gigawatts of offshore floating wind power post 2030. Delivering this ambition will require the development of the skills base, supply chains and the infrastructure to support the offshore industry. In doing this, the government intends to focus on utilising Ireland's existing energy and maritime infrastructure. The recently published Cork Harbour 2025 Ready to Float Offshore Wind Report highlights that Cork is very well placed to support and service the offshore wind sector in terms of its location, existing port capacity, local supply chain readiness, regional infrastructure, human capital, skills and training and of course, that Cork can do attitude. Indeed, I note that already plans have been announced for Ireland's first green hydrogen facility that will be located in Cork Harbour. There may even be opportunities to use those gas fields that provided Ireland's gas supplies for so many years to sequester carbon emissions from electricity generation and industrial use that can't be eliminated. The ambitions that will be discussed today to capture the opportunities presented by the region and to position Cork as a world-leading harbour economy will facilitate Ireland's transition to a low-carbon society while supporting a resilient economic recovery. I'm also acutely aware of the importance of the tourism and hospitality to the Cork Harbour economy. The importance of the sector to the recovery can be seen from the fact in 2019 cruise ships brought 200,000 passengers and 80,000 crew to Cove in 2019. Spike Island, of course, has been a huge success with 75,000 visitors in the year before the pandemic. I look forward to the reopening of Fort Camden, which is another fantastic amenity on our doorstep and I'm pleased that we now have a clear pathway to the full reopening of the tourism and hospitality sector and I commend Cork County Council for all their work in this space. Today's forum takes place in a very significant week in the economic life of our country with the publication of the Economic Recovery Plan and also the National Recovery and Resilience Plan, which sets out how Ireland will access EU funding. The Union's response to the global pandemic in the form of Next Generation EU and I'm delighted that 185 million euro has been allocated to accelerate the provision of electrified rail services in the Cork metropolitan region. This will make a very significant difference to the development of our country in the years ahead. So I hope you have a really great discussion today and I genuinely look forward to working with all of you to develop what we all know is the immense potential of Cork Harbour and in that endeavour you will have my absolute unequivocal support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much indeed Minister. Now, this event is really about collaboration and how together we can truly activate this incredible asset that is Cork Harbour. To highlight what has been achieved to date together with what can be activated over the course of the next 20 years, will you please welcome the Chief Executive of Cork County Council, Tim Lucy.
Thank you Jonathan. First of all, again, a very big welcome to all of you this morning and I want to thank our mayor and minister at the outset for adding to this morning's event. Our aim here this morning is to introduce and embed the Cork Harbour Economy concept to you, to demonstrate the real activation measures that are ongoing to support that economy, to add value to your understanding of progress being made, our capacity, but also blockages that we need to overcome and more importantly, to ensure that you leave with renowned or renewed confidence in all of our ability to maximise on this opportunity. Michael and Podrick following me will delve into more detail on current activation levels, but also at the outset, I would say it's not just three of us here, we have an entire management team across North, South and West Cork and a range of directors that are focused not just on this economy but the entirety of Cork. The Cork Harbour and its economy, we all know how fantastic it is. We live and breathe it every day. However, we wanted to get an international perspective on the opportunity that it presents. We therefore in late 2018 went to TUM International, a company out of the Technological University of Munich who collaborate with Inside Bavaria. Inside Bavaria being a state agency who bring together an expertise in cluster networks of European industry, strategic regional planning. Joined by AHP Solutions Berlin, who are experts in strategic site economic assessment and completed by Compteur Limited, who have expertise in economic policy consultancy and who also advise on special economic zones across the world. This morning, we won't delve into the detail of the work, but it does provide the platform for this morning and for future project work and collaboration with industry and state. In terms of the purpose of that and where we led to today, we want to ensure that the Cork Harbour economy itself is a specific, clear focus of the Ireland 2040 Project Board. We want to build and achieve recognition for the harbour economy as a unique global, spatial and economic entity in its own right. We want to build and deliver a greater level of awareness and confidence among everybody, amongst investors, communities, that we as an organisation in conjunction with all other state agencies have planned for this opportunity. And we want ultimately to build on current delivery models. We can work that through to a greater extent through enhanced collaboration, operating models also that need to be driving joint projects and be agile and responsive, but also while continuing to be true to the strategic 2040 vision in the national planning framework. Before I move on to the Cork Harbour economy and to set out our concept here, I do want to take the opportunity to ensure that you understand our organisation, our capacity and our ambition to lead and deliver. Daily, many of you interact with us, but we also position ourselves as a leader nationally so as to be a stretching organisation, one of a learning nature with very significant ambition for Cork and indeed our staff. To pick out a number of those up in front of you there, we are the leader on some key national projects. We're the leader for the southern region on climate change adaptation planning. We're the leader for the southern region on waste enforcement and management. We're the leader of the National Food Safety Laboratory Service based in Iskara. We're also a first in terms of local government in this country in terms of our joint venture with the Irish Strategic Investment Fund, in terms of our unique 15-year framework loan with the European Investment Bank and the Council of Europe Development Bank, in terms of the nature of investment of over a quarter of billion euro that that will drive locally just on local projects. But in particular, I want to pick out one there and we as an organisation are proud to have achieved the accolade of achieving the ISO 5001 Energy Management System for our entire operations. If there's one takeaway from that, in conjunction with the leading role we play in climate change and waste management etc, I think it's incredibly important that you will be confident that at the core of our ambition for the Cork Harbour economy, indeed for all of Cork, is that it becomes a global leader in climate change action and sustainability, one which allows industry, commerce, transport, people, communities, heritage, environment, all combined to continue to develop in a compatible manner, but all focused on our climate change ambitions to 2050. So I want to now present the perspective and put perspective on the Cork Harbour economy. The national planning framework quite rightly places very significant emphasis on city growth across the country, rightly so, but let's look at the statistics and the comparators for the harbour economy. Let's look at Galway as an entity in its own right, the city in suburbs with a population of 79,000 and jobs of 44,000. Let's look at Waterford City in suburbs, a population of 53,000 and jobs of 24,000 and let's look at Limerick with a population of 94,000 and jobs of 44,000. We have a superb city in this, in this part of the country, a city of now just over 200,000 population. But the Cork Harbour economy itself is equivalent to all of the other cities in our state. It has a population combined across the region and across a spatial entity of 70, nearly 72,000 and with jobs of just under 30,000. Therefore, our objective here is to show that the harbour economy is a unique spatial community and economic entity in its own right, which we need to make sure is elevated in all of our minds as a national asset deserving of unique and special focus. To move on in terms of its national position, the growth targets speak for themselves. This harbour economy is earmarked for growth of up to 49% in terms of population, up to 72% in terms of employment levels, up to 51% in terms of housing units and quite remarkably, nearly three-quarters of a billion square metres of commercial, industrial and non-residential space can be developed within this harbour economy. I believe we will achieve them. I believe we will be an exemplar in the state to 2040. And again, you will be the judge of that, but you will also be partners within that. But I'm confident that with a deeper understanding of where we are through Michael's and Podrick's briefings and through the engagement with the rest of our directors in our organisation and with the collaborative and progressive work we're engaging, that we all have the capacity to deliver on this ambition. But of course, the harbour economy is not an entity that is cocooned from its region or indeed from the world. We know the world influence it has. While we all talk about the Cork Harbour economy this morning, it really is a microcosm of all of Cork, city and county and the wider region. This simply depicts graphically the strength of large-scale commerce across Cork, the point being that collaborative and delivery models that focus on Cork's growth ambition should reflect this. And I assure you that in Cork County Council, we see the wider urban and rural fabric of Cork across all of Cork County just as important to that within the harbour economy, such that all boats will rise on the same tide. To move on arising from our research, we want to present two figures on this particular slide here in front of you this morning. To demonstrate the output from our assessment, we were able to establish that the harbour economy has annually a 4.5 billion gross domestic product. The prize however is the big figure. The prize is that we can grow that to 12.4 billion per annum to 2040. It's the prize if we can ensure that our delivery models, our regulatory and commercial and community interactions operate at their optimum levels to 2040. Is it realistic? That's yet to be proven, but we must have a sense of the prize. And to present three further findings from our analysis with our international partners, it's clear to us that the business case for investment in a harbour economy product has proven and of very high value to our economic future. With an investment of 1.5 billion in hard infrastructure, and while this is just hard infrastructure, clearly there's significant investment in soft infrastructure and the soft elements of building society etc, that 1.5 billion will provide a 769 million return at development phase of the projects. But more interestingly, the return per annum from that level of public investment by driving private investment into it and community investment will be in the order of 643 million per annum thereafter. And while the gross domestic product is a factor we're using today, it doesn't in any way diminish our focus on wider societal gains such as health, wellbeing, place making, sustainability etc, all of which must prosper to the same extent and be part of remaining and maintaining the equilibrium between all competing forces. In terms of concluding before Michael and Podrick come in, I just want to set out four key headline pieces here that we want to focus on. First of all, the global network. Again, to re-emphasise, the harbour economy is linked to a high-performing global network of value chains with the potential to generate an additional 7.5 billion output per annum and an additional 21,000 jobs to 2040. It's a spatial asset. It's a significant spatial asset defined and linked by its population, its physical infrastructure and economic infrastructure and it has shared assets and opportunities. It clearly is of national and international importance in terms of the economic potential of the Cork Harbour economy will be leveraged through hard and soft interventions locally and international connections and engagements globally. But going back to the reference in terms of climate change and in terms of the ability of this harbour economy through the districts, through distribution, through energy, the Cork Harbour economy has the potential to emerge as a global leader in sustainable development. Thank you.
Tim, thank you very much indeed. Very clear and exciting demonstration of what's possible and importantly, what's within our reach. This is made possible by adopting a strategic planning approach and to give us a synopsis of what's been planned for today and tomorrow, I'm going to hand over now to Cork County Council's Director of Planning and Development, Michael Lynch.
Good morning. I'm going to outline our collaborative infrastructure delivery programme for Cork Harbour and explain this whole of government approach. I'm going to focus on infrastructure delivery programmes being advanced to 2028 to enable delivery of ambitious growth targets. It's about people, places, jobs and communities, placing Cork County Council firmly in the role of lead stakeholder, working effectively with the Department of Housing, Local Government and Heritage, state agencies, local stakeholders like the Port of Cork and Cork City Council as well as the communities we serve. It's about planned infrastructure-led corridor-based growth. It's the eastern corridor from Donkettle to Middleton including Cove and Whitegate and the southern corridor with Cargeline, Shanbally, Ringasgiddy at its heart. The CMAT's being advanced with the National Transport Authority in Cork City Council, we estimate will commit up to 300 million euros worth by 2028 through the Bus Connects Programme for 50 kilometres radial and 150 kilometres orbital services in terms of rail with two-way through running at Kent Station, new stations at Carrigool, Cove, Waterrock, Middleton and electrification of the existing suburban rail, effectively linking Mallow to Metropolitan Cork. There'll be a further 100 million euro worth of URDF focused on compact road place making and reflecting town centre-first principles at Cargeline, Passage West, Carrigool, Cove and Middleton. The slide behind me shows the NTA five-year plan we've agreed, which will connect every community in strategic employment area by active travel and sustainable modes. Southern corridor stretches from Passage West, Monks on the north to Crosshaven in the south with Cargeline, Shanbally, Ringasgiddy at its core. Shanbally are at Cargeline, we're planning 200 new, 2000 new homes. Cargeline will be transformed from the town centre with the inner relief road offering opportunities for brownfield redevelopment. We already have ambitious and transformative pre-planning discussions. We're reimagining the Onabwe car park and main street upgrades, put place making to the fore. The Transportation and Public Realm Enhancement Plan, which is ongoing with the support of the NTA, will be incorporated to County Development Plan later in 2021. We estimate 25 million in projects. We'll link homes to schools, town centres and jobs. We're targeting a model shift. 56% of commuters travel less than 7.5 kilometres, mostly by private car. The Shannon Park urban expansion area continues to deliver and could bill out by 2028. Cargeline will transform from the commuter town to the estreetown. The eastern corridor stretches from Donkettle to Middleton includes Cove and Whitegate. Little Island, we're planning approximately 500 new homes. We completed Little Island study in early 2019 and immediately moved into implementation. We've listened to stakeholders, we're addressing congestion and improving quality of life for residents, working with the NTA. We're seeking planning consent for 6 million euros for public transport and active travel investment project and we've already started planning a 4.5 to 5 million euro N25 rail overbridge with TIRIS Rail in the NTA. We're transforming Little Island to the gold standard in how to address congestion in a live employment zone of regional significance and grow a residential community. Carrigool, we're planning approximately 3,500 new homes. It's positioned to be amongst the leading location for sustainable national planning framework growth delivery in the state. New school campus with 2,500 students at its heart, rail line and extensive active travel network. The IDA worked with us at the Business Park with extensive investment and we're going to connect the 50 hectare Ballyadam site with public transport and active travel. We'll transform the town centre with a focus on public realm and place making. We will unlock significant potential, the urban expansion area to the north of the rail line. Cork County Council will advance 17 projects in the next round of URDF at a value of between 45 to 50 million euro. Cove, we're planning 1,600 new homes, advancing a number of initiatives to transform the town centre, redevelopment, place making and public realm improvements. We'll be seeking planning consent in Q4 of 21, linking the cathedral with the waterfront. Huge tourism potential, but not confined to tourism. Harbourside offices increase residential development in the core. We'll improve connectivity to train station and ferry. In the urban expansion area, we're planning 1,300 new homes in which Cork County Council is a significant land bank. The key site potential for servicing emerging offshore renewable energy sector is significant. Belverley Bridge, the R624 and Cove Cross require investment if Marina Point is to deliver for the region and its important NPF enabling role. Middleton, we're planning approximately 3,500 new homes, high demand for housing with strong market sentiment. Approximately 1,000 homes are pre-planning or planning permission and working with our colleagues in Irish Water bring forward for development. Planning consent is in place for sustainable transport projects being advanced with the NTA to the value of 15 million euros, linking homes, schools, town centre, train station, addressing severance to the N25 and linking the Middleton Yall Greenway in Waterrock. Waterrock is a 7.5 million liath scheme which will enable the delivery of 2,500 homes. Cork County Council is delivering infrastructure across multiple land holdings using 20 million of its own funds. There'll be a train stop at the core of the community, land purchases about to commence in Q3 2021. 1,350 homes are in pre-planning. We anticipate 650 unit planning application with supporting services by June of this year. Cork Harbour economy is a unique proposition. Cork County Council is lead stakeholder, delivering programmed and sequenced infrastructure projects, enabling delivery of ambitious growth targets, providing certainty for communities and investors. Thank you for your time.
Michael, thank you very much for your contribution. It's great to see so many positive projects on the horizon. Please be sure to let us know what you are thinking by tweeting the hashtag is Cork Harbour Economy and we look forward to a very real discussion centred around your questions and that's to follow in a short while. Our final speaker this morning though, on the subject of infrastructure and what it means in terms of connection, safety and sustainability, please welcome Cork County Council's Director of Roads and Transportation, Horik Barrett.
Good morning. Today I want to talk to you about how Cork County Council is building a safe, connected, accessible, reliable and sustainable transport network to support the growth of the Cork Harbour economy for the next 50 years. Over 40 years ago, LUTS laid the foundation for the transport system and the road network that we have in Cork Harbour today. With some exceptions, a lot of that network is built for a different time and while we can all identify deficiencies and problems in the network, the simple position is that we need and expect more from our roads and civic spaces today and the recent lockdowns highlighted this to everyone. The process will see the evolution of the critical links that will allow us to separate strategically important commercial traffic from active travel and commuter traffic. This process has commenced in Donkettle and Little Island, will continue on the quarter Ringasgiddy project and the plans will see the same process continue on the N25 between Carrigool... And the plans will see the same process continue on the N25 between Carrigool and Middleton, from there to the regional road to Cove. These four major projects alone represent an investment of over 630 million euros in Cork Harbour. In time, we plan improvements to the entire necklace of roads around the harbour and the harbour towns. Cork County Council is working on these projects with our partners in TII, Transport Infrastructure Ireland, and the Department of Transport. Larger projects will always grab the headlines, but over the last five years, more than 150 projects costing almost 40 million have been completed on the local road network within the harbour area, and these are shown here. Moving back to the major projects, starting on the western side of Cork Harbour, first up is the Cork to Ringasgiddy project. Planning for this long awaited project was confirmed in March of this year. This 12 and a half kilometre Euro, 12 and a half kilometre, 220 million euro scheme is the last piece of the jigsaw that will see the ports of Belfast, Dublin and Cork all connected to the trans-European 10T network. The project will support the strategic development of the port facilities at Ringasgiddy, including the relocation of the container terminal from Tivoli to Ringasgiddy. The project will also provide opportunities for sustainable travel. As a result of the Supreme Court decision, the acquisition of the land necessary has commenced through the CPO process and the next move on this project will be the enabling works, which will include fencing, service diversions and archaeology in the coming months. In the coming years, the business case for this project will continue to be assessed in accordance with the Public Spending Code. And approved at gateways, we will procure the detailed design to enable us to go to tender and hopefully commence construction in and around three years from now. Moving north to Donkettle, Transport Infrastructure Ireland is the client for the construction of the Donkettle Interchange Project. This project is staffed by engineers from Cork County Council as part of the site supervisory team. The project budget is 215 million and the interchange is strategically important as it is the intersection of three major national primary routes, Cork-Dublin, Cork-Waterford and the southern ring road via the Jacklins Tunnel. This interchange is effectively the fulcrum around which the entire region and Cork Harbour moves. The existing interchange comprises a signalised roundabout, which creates considerable delays at peak times and inadequate pedestrian and cycle facilities. The proposed development involves the reconfiguration of the existing interchange to a free flowing arrangement. Some notable aspects of the proposed development include the construction of four roundabouts, 52 bridges, several culverts and other structures, proper pedestrian and cycling facilities and an intelligent transport system. Moving east to the Carrigool to Middleton upgrade scheme, the plan here is to submit this scheme to Borpinola in 2022. This is a 90 million euro project and the study area for this scheme is outlined here in blue. Currently, the five kilometre section of the road between Carrigool and Middleton is substandard. There are numerous at-grade junctions, median crossing and direct access point, which are unsafe for a road of this type. The main objective here is to improve safety, reduce congestion, improve comfort and journey time reliability and enhance connectivity between Cork and Waterford. Another benefit of the scheme will be an opportunity to provide safe access to strategic residential and industrial sites, including a large industrial site at Ballyadam. The four route options are currently being assessed and evaluated and the best option will be selected in the coming weeks. The next step is to take that selected option and bring it through the environmental impact assessment process and report and submit the project, including the CPO, to Borpinola by the middle of next year. Moving south to the Cove Road, this is a narrow regional road connecting Cove to the national road network. The road is approximately 10 and a half kilometres in length and has poor alignment and serious capacity problems at peak times. At present, 15,000 vehicles per day use the road and they have to negotiate the 5.5 metre wide Belvally Bridge. This 200-year-old stone art structure is the only link between Cove and the mainland. The route is the road access to Cove Town, to the Cruise Terminal, to the Marino Point, Cork Dockyard, Spike Island and Fota. The problem really is that the Cove Road is a regional road that carries traffic of the value, type and importance of a national road. If the Cove Road could talk, it would tell us, I'm one of the most important roads in Ireland and I really am a national road, like. An alternative, safe, new link road is essential for safety reasons. Cork County Council is procuring a strategic assessment report funded by the Department of Transport and this is effectively the starting gun for the project. The preliminary project cost at this stage is 100 million euro and therefore the project will have to be broken up into a series of smaller projects to facilitate delivery. Aside from safety and reliability regarding the R624, upgrading of the R624 will allow the development of a deep water facility at Marino Point. And the site is a national planning framework enabling location as it facilitates the relocation of industries from docklands and other strategic sites in metropolitan Cork. It will also allow for the residential development in Cove, particularly in designated urban expansion areas. Before I conclude, I'm glad to report that Cork County Council is currently hitting a sweet spot in terms of building capacity to deliver major infrastructure. We're building the N22 McCroom-Balavurna bypass costing in excess of 280 million and that project is set for completion during 2023. We're working with our colleagues in Limerick City and County Council in progressing the Cork-Limerick project and it is hoped to publish the preferred route option there in the coming months. We're working with TII in bringing forward relief road schemes in Mallow, Castle Martor and Banden and with the Department of Transport on schemes right around the harbour. For example, the Middleton Northern Relief Road and Carrigalline Western Relief Road. These roads in Cork Harbour are critically important to our open economy and we are developing a network that can safely accommodate the reliable and efficient carriage of goods and people that will position Cork in the harbour area as a quality logistics hub and a world-class residential and employment location. Cork Harbour, safe, connected, accessible, reliable and sustainable. Thank you for your time.
Now, thank you to all of our speakers for their presentations. A quick turnaround on the set here because we had to put out the chairs for our panel. There's a lot to digest there, but it really does capture the potential of the Cork Harbour economy and what we can achieve through real joined up thinking. The presentations, by the way, are going to be available on the event website for those of you who would like to revisit any of the points that were made by our speakers. Throughout the morning, we've been asking for your questions, which have been coming in via social media, so thank you for that. And I'm delighted to say we have been joined by all of the speakers who are going to do the best they can now to get through as many questions as I can throw at them in the time that is left. So we welcome back Tim Lucy, Patrick Barrett, Michael Lynch and also joining us for the first time this morning, Valerie Sullivan, who is the Divisional Manager for South Cork. You're all very welcome. Thank you so much for joining us. Tim, I'm going to begin with you. You talked about being agile and responsive, which are very good things for a local authority to be. But it's not unheard of for local government to be accused of being neither. So what is different now with this plan?
Jonathan, first of all, I think you've seen the level of responsiveness that we have to the Cork Harbour economy and not just that economy, but the entire Cork economy. But to talk about agility and responsiveness, you need to understand the context in which we operate. We're the only organisation in the state that actually has to translate government policy into international policy across economic development, energy, community development, rural development, everything, everything associated with life into a coherent plan and a balanced plan to try and meet all of those needs and to balance them for Cork. In that as well, it's interesting that we are also have a, we have a statutory responsibility to meet the objectives of that plan. But also then, we're the regulator and all of that. And I know in discussions with you, you've often referred to this concept of a brake and an accelerator, we're both in some ways.
Very hard to be both.
Very hard to be both. And that actually brings an incredible level of pressures and stresses on an organisation, on our staff on a daily basis. We get that through our own councillors, they bring those to us and the issues to us. But also we do so in a much greater, I suppose, level of enhancement of engagement with public and community groups at this particular point in time with industry. So when you talk about agility and responsiveness, every organisation is more agile and more responsive when those types of pressures and stresses continuously have to be shaped and delivered for an entire set of people living in a county. I suppose longer term, as we move forward, there's also a particular level of stress and pressures on us to deliver across a whole range of different agencies, to marry those together and I might get the opportunity to refer to that later this morning as to how we do that.
Yeah, and we'll come back to that because that's a very interesting point because you have to be a lot of different things. But Valerie, one of the things that didn't exist 30 years ago was the environmental agenda. It's not all economic, it's environment. How can all of these things come together in a way that we acknowledge that that very important green factor without costing the earth?
Yeah, well, I suppose for decades, Jonathan, we are doing exactly that. So none of what you see already in the harbour has happened by accident, you know. These were all planned and tested against environmental considerations to the nth degree and any planning applicant will vote for that. And they do take time, but I think we've proven already that big projects can be delivered without compromising the environment or quality of life. They're there already. And I give you by way of one example, look what we did with Hull Bolin. You know, took possibly one of the most toxic sites in the state, transformed it so that it now coexists happily, you know, with Spike Island and the other harbour amenities. And I think we've managed to facilitate competing interests over several decades without damaging the environment.
Patrick, one of the things that's quite apparent from your presentation is that we are very limited by existing infrastructure. And that's just a reflection of geography, it's a reflection of historic levels of investment and what we can do. How do we do that? How do we build new infrastructure when we have that restriction on us of what we're left with historically?
Yeah, look, Jonathan, Ireland didn't have the infrastructure development in the 50s and 60s that other western economies enjoyed. We're running to catch up at this point in time. But we're doing it in a climate and at a time when we have a very good governance framework. And that gives us confidence that we can do the work, do the major investment without costing the earth, to borrow a phrase from you. The governance framework through the public spending code and through the environmental impact process provides us with the confidence that we can do it sensibly and sensitively. But what we try to do is we bring a pipeline of projects, small investments, small projects where we can have quick gains can buy us a lot of time while we're planning the major projects because major projects take time. We have to go through a very rigorous environmental impact assessment, go through the public spending code and make sure that the business case stacks up financially and economically. And while we're doing that, if we have other projects that can provide us with improvements along the way, that should get us there. Constant improvement through a series of small projects, minor projects and major projects is what we're striving for.
It's just that joined up thinking that we're talking about. I'm going to come back to some of the points you raised there in just a minute. I am going to hear the Cove Road talk to me every time I drive along it now, based on what you've just said, but that's fair enough. I think the Cove Road and myself would agree on many things. Michael, though, there was talk about an interagency approach there. From a planning perspective, that makes incredible sense that you have a joined up approach and it's advantageous to everybody. But is it easier said than done to get everybody on the same page?
Well, John, it won't be, certainly won't be without its challenges, I think, and I think that's fair to say. But we don't have a choice in it either, it has to be done. And even within our presentation this morning, I think we gave example of a live example. Waterrock Middleton, the land was owned there 15, 20 years for 2,500 housing units along a rail line. It proved difficult to develop for the individual landowners, there's a lot of fragmented land ownership down there, major investment needed upfront. The Department of Housing, Local Government and Heritage introduced a lihave and URDF enabling initiatives, which were game changers for us as a local authority. We're working closely with Irish Water, who gave major commitment to network extension. The NTA Around CMATs Active Travel, Department of Education in schools, TII very supportive when we went for our planning consult a number of years back. So I suppose we're on the road of lead stakeholder, but it's certainly an interagency approach.
But again, it shows it can be done. Tim, listening to Minister McGrath speaking, talking about big infrastructure projects. And my brain went strangely through history back to the hydroelectric dam being built in Iskara. And I just can't see a project of that scale, despite its strategic importance back then and even now, that something like that could ever happen because of the way that just things are done. The council back then was kind of in charge of everything and now you've got more agencies involved. And has that fragmentation damaged what the council can do to get things done?
I think, Jonathan, it has changed significantly the form of leadership that we need to bring to working with all stakeholders. Certainly, we've lost control and authority over certain investment decision-making such as into water services, into national road infrastructure, et cetera. And now we're also under a much higher level of scrutiny, I suppose, from a national level in terms of how we deliver projects, in terms of our planning policies, et cetera. And obviously as well in terms of, I suppose, general community engagement with us across a whole range of interested sectors. So we've become, I suppose, in some ways, you can look at anybody within an organisation, if they're a leader, they can't lead unless they have followers. So we are the actual, the only organisation in Cork that actually leads out in a very much an advocacy role now on behalf of all of Cork. We've got to continuously try to squeeze and I suppose prove the merits of investment in Cork across the range of state agencies. Try to bring them with us, try to bring them with us very specifically. And Michael has already referred to how we've done that down in Waterrock. We did that through our political body and through the executive side.
Just making a decision and saying that's how we're doing it, it's bringing all these other agencies, all these other people with you.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And, you know, I suppose, we, in that, we're like any, I suppose, almost a lobbying organisation at times in some cases, where we're proving the merits of investment, we're proving, here we're this morning, we're trying to prove the merits of investment at both a private sector level area and public sector level in the Cork Harbour economy. So that's the leadership role that we now play and it's actually potentially a more powerful one, yeah.
Valerie, one of the things we've learned from the pandemic is that we can actually do things quickly if we put our mind to it. And one of the other things we've learnt is that public realm and livability are huge factors. And I don't think we're going to lose that, I really hope we don't lose that. Is that going to impact the rollout of a project, the scale of this? Or is it just good to have that at the centre of decision-making process?
Yeah, well, first off, I think we've shown time and time again across the country, local government is brilliant in a crisis. And that's what we've done again in a pandemic. But I think that the public realm and quality of life considerations, they're already integral parts of everything we do. Like we don't do anything in terms of a road, a park, a planning application, a housing development without maximising the public realm gain from that and building that into everything we do. So it's entirely possible to deliver and to deliver those as well, you know, along with the projects. And I think what really strikes me looking back on it is, as Tim kind of alluded to there, we're custodians of the entire county and the county's future in a way. You know, we're not an agency that has responsibility for aspects of the county or aspect, an aspect of infrastructure. We actually have to think holistically. And that's why public realm and quality of life considerations would be so important in our work. And just during the pandemic as well, you know, where people might, we were very agile. You know, we had to make, you know, quick interventions and transformations in every town and village.
They made a big difference.
And they made a huge difference and it's great that people could see that and see it quickly. But also we got on with huge strategic projects along the lines of public realm and quality of life. So, you know, we advanced the public realm project in Cove, the Middleton to Yall Greenway, the Donkettle to Carrigool pedestrian cycleway, the All Board Walk. So there's lots of other things.
Yeah, they sit alongside because they make these areas livable and let's face it, the harbour is a great spot to live as we know. Patrick, one of the things that people, when they started moving around the county again, were probably quite surprised at is the progress that's being made at Donkettle. Now, we know Donkettle obviously had a delay, that was a national issue. But, you know, Donkettle is still moving, the work is ongoing around it. Is that the type of template you want to use on those big issues, those big problems, the necklace issue that you talked about there? That we can keep everything moving while improving it in the long term?
Yeah. Getting the choreography right, Jonathan, takes a hell of a lot of planning and that's what we strive to do. Say in Donkettle, for example, we're aiming at a full opening there by quarter to 2024, by April 2024, with sectional openings in the meantime. And we'll be going for some of those sectional openings later this year, next year and the year after to keep things moving. I mean, safety of the travelling public is our number one priority to make sure that the people working on site and to make sure that people travelling through the site are safe. But with sectional openings, that will allow us to move the chessboards around the table and keep things moving all the while. But those sectional openings will deliver significant commuting gain for the public, will deliver safer active travel space, you know, including the opening of a cycleway later on this year. So those type of things will have big improvements for the public. And we try to do that everywhere. When we go to work in town centres, it's not always easy because we don't have good alternatives, because we don't have the space to do it. And we try and minimise disruption as much as we can. But look, when you're in a town centre, when you're in a tight space, there will be disruption, as there is disruption in Donkettle, but we strive to minimise that.
But it's normally short-term disruption for a long term, even though people don't like disruption as we know. And Michael, the one thing that's clear to me from travelling around is the harbour is constantly evolving. And if you look at all the different competing interests that are in there, we've got industry, we've got tourism, we've got businesses, we've got manufacture. And sometimes they're all pulling in different directions and they're not necessarily viewing the world as an interconnected one. Can a modern way of planning help? And what have we learnt in the last couple of years that will mean that you can help this project become a reality and be a key part of that national economic driver for 2040?
Jonathan, look, planning is changing and I think it's responding to societal requirements in that regard. I think events like today where we're given division of voice, so key stakeholders can understand it will become more and more important. so key stakeholders can understand it, will become more and more important. Fundamentally, planning will still be about making the big decision, the tough decision on behalf of the wider community. But I think the big change in the planning system coming around, and I think it's happening right now, is that of we're considering now about when will something happen? When will it be delivered? How will it be delivered? Is it viable? I mean, questions around what use will go where are quite established now, and people have a good understanding of that. And we're really, I suppose, about providing certainty that it will happen, certainty for the community, certainty for investors and certainty for us all, that when we put a plan in place, it will happen, it will be sequenced, programmed, and it will be delivered.
Yeah, no surprises, really. That's the rule. Lots of people have sent some questions in, and I do want to get to them, so I'm going to move to those if I can. Patrick, I'm going to give this one first to you. And thanks everybody who sent in questions because they're better than mine. The harbour, according to this person says, is developing in a positive way. However, a side effect is fast-moving traffic through small towns away from the N28. Are there plans to increase safety and reduce speed? That's one of the problems you have, small towns, again, from the last year. We know how important that is for people walking along the side of the road, they need to feel safe. How can we help those towns while still developing the way that you want to?
Look, what we're striving to do is to separate that strategically commercial, the strategic commercial traffic from town centres. Nobody wants big trucks travelling through small towns, it's just not appropriate. And we want to make our towns and villages safe for the people living there and safe for people going to and from school and going to and from work. So protecting town centres to ensure that the traffic travelling through them is slow-moving is our top priority. So with what we started last year in Project ACT in terms of refocusing the town centre to pedestrians and highlighting or ensuring that the hierarchy of pedestrian movement is identified, that's what we're aiming for. And moving that traffic, that true traffic away from the town centre on bypasses, if we have bypasses or alternative routes, is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, and we've done that. I mean, the national roads used to pass through loads of towns where people used to kind of, you know, barely slow down as you're going through. We've moved on, and we're just going to continue moving on if we can. Valerie, here's another question. Will there be sustainable jobs for our local community? I mean, what is a sustainable job? I suppose it's the fact that employment isn't going to be fluctuating widely or developing in a different way. I mean, this plan, does it help that?
I think it does because the ambition for the harbour and the potential of the harbour itself, if only we realised that ambition, that is the natural result of it, you know, is jobs. That will actually come from existing businesses who are operating sustainably in the harbour anyway. And both direct and indirect employment will come from that. But what we do really is create the conditions for those jobs and job opportunities. That's what the council does. And ultimately, the harbour, like as the minister alluded to earlier, has the real potential to become a net exporter of energy, for example. And, you know, that's down to indigenous and FDI industries, and we're so happy to work with both, as we have done for years.
It's about having that mix and an environmentally sustainable mix as well. Michael, another question. Can the panel address the potential for a green hydrogen supply chain cluster in Cork Harbour? GNI and others, including Energy Cork, are advocating for this. The whole green energy thing is going to be a big area of growth, isn't it?
It is, Jonathan. And look, rather than focus on one particular one, we'll talk about it in the round, maybe. I think renewable energies has a massive role to play. I mean, as a county, we already have the most wind farms in the country. We've granted most solar farms in the country. And I think the delivery of the Celtic Interconnector, which is an EU project of common interest into Cork Harbour, will drive major innovation in energy production as we become an exporter of energy into the European market. That in itself then will attract and retain industry because we'll be delivering renewable energy sources at a keen price within the harbour area.
That just shows you the evolution. I mean, I remember when I heard about that interconnector first. That was so we could get energy from them. But, you know, in a short period of time, we're actually talking about sending energy back the other way, which just shows you how quickly things can move. I'm going to stay with you, Michael, because here's another one on planning. Are there any plans for increased use of harbour for local passenger ferry services between Cork City and our waterfront towns, such as Cove Cross Avon Passage West? And will any proposed bridges as part of the Dockland development still allow boats upstream? So I suppose it's a boating question. You know, we've heard a lot of talk about these. Are we a little closer to it, maybe?
Well, I suppose it's something that we're alive to, it's something we'll respond positively to. Cork County Council has in the past granted planning permission for such types of development. Seematts is very clear it's going to be driven by the commercial sector. So I suppose what we'd be saying is that if there are deliberate and costed and real opportunities there, we will respond positively to that. Regarding the ongoing access of boats up the harbour, I think, look, that's a fundamental. I think that's something that ourselves, Cork City Council and the Port of Cork will work with all key agents there.
Yeah, and personally, I can't wait to get out there. It's one of my things I want to do over the summer, is get out on the water around the harbour. Patrick, here's an easy question for you. When will the new motorway project, the Ringus Didi, commence?
Planning was confirmed in March. We're working on the fencing, the securing of the land, the archaeology and the service diversions currently. We're doing the detailed design. We'll be working through the Public Spending Code in terms of getting government approval at pre-tender and post-tender stage and before we go to contract. But subject to approval at all those gateways, Jonathan, we'd hope to be at construction three years from now.
Oh, three years, okay, so that is a firm timeline. Valerie, heritage, what role does heritage play in Cork's harbour economy? And a slightly related question, how do we ensure biodiversity is protected and enhanced? Heritage is the most obvious thing that we have, and we're only starting to really appreciate it now, aren't we, through the work of people in Cove and areas around there? That it's such an amazing place that will draw people, not just around the country but around the world.
Absolutely, and what we have on our doorsteps is so rich in heritage. And I think only, you know, bits of the story have been told. And it's such a key part of the harbour economy, actually, because it converts to tourism and all the spin-off from that activity within the harbour. But I think the council is deploying that heritage value into the economy already, although there is more to do with examples like Spike Island and Camden Fort Mar. But definitely, you know, and that's one of the beauties of the harbour, I think, is the ability of the harbour to have that type of the heritage, the tourism, the industry, commerce, you know, big development, residential recreation coexist happily.
On the biodiversity thing, I don't, it usedn't be much a consideration as it is now, but that is factoring into the thinking of this as well. This has to be something that respects all the users of the harbour, be they human or otherwise.
Yeah, it really does, and it's also worth doing. You know, and I think every industry, including ourselves as an organisation, has responsibility for biodiversity. And I think, you know, you only have to look at things that the council has already done, like the Harpers Island Wetlands Nature Reserve, the Middleton Biodiversity Plan, which has proven to be an exemplary model to be replicated. Absolutely, and I just think it's everybody's responsibility. But the harbour is a place, as I said, that can be home to all of these uses and still have biodiversity at its core.
Tim, I'm just conscious of time. I just want to finish up on this point. I'm knocking around long enough now to have been at the launch of various different plans. You know, Transport 2020, various national, I was at the National Spatial Strategy launch thinking at the time, well, I wonder how much of this is going to happen. Now we're talking about this, we're talking about the plan for the harbour in 2040. The tragedy for me is I've gotten older, in the meantime I've become a father, and I've realised that, you know what, this isn't actually for me, it's actually for the generation that's coming up behind. So the potential has been outlined this morning to draw all of these strands together, to make this happen to the benefit of the entire community. What's the message you want to give out to the people who are watching us right now about what we can achieve and how they can help achieve it?
Jonathan, I'm around longer than you, I'd say, probably, even though I can't remember plans before that. But look, the key message here this morning is, based on the briefings here this morning, this is a real stocktake on where we're at with the Cork Harbour economy. We will into the future give stocktakes on the rest of the county, there's no doubt about that, and we'll have other webinars because it's a process we want to begin and to sell the message and that. You can see from the level of responsiveness and the level of activity that's going on that there's real confidence within our own organisation and across our political system that we actually have the ear of government, as Minister McGrath, Michael McGrath already has given us a commitment, we have that. We have very good, strong relationships with the range of agencies that actually are key to making investment decisions into the harbour economy. We believe there's further development of those delivery models that we need for the harbour economy and for all of Cork. And I noticed yesterday that there was reference in the National Economic Recovery Plan to the concept of city delivery boards, and I've already done a paper to government back in February around the concept of a Cork 2040 delivery board, because there aren't any boundaries around Cork, really. And actually, the national planning framework focuses on thematic areas such as climate change, such as energy, such as transportation, as opposed to boundaries. So we would hope that Cork would become a leader in terms of ensuring that it has an all-of-Cork approach towards the delivery of the national planning framework. I would say for investors out there, certainly stay in touch with us, communicate with us. Let us know what you're thinking of doing three years, four years, five years in advance. We've had a lot of engagement most recently with those who are involved in the whole move towards energy development in the harbour, and we know that we can build and prepare the infrastructure for that. To those youngsters out there, and clearly youngsters may not be on this morning, but to parents of youngsters and that, there's an incredible quality of life in the harbour and in Cork. We could show you that from stats we did a number of years ago. I think it was 92% of people said that they were more than satisfied with quality of life in Cork and that relates to the harbour. We are committing here this morning to ensuring that that quality of life in all of the challenges that are down in the harbour and across all of Cork, to try and get that balance right, we're committing to actually improving that, and we will improve it over time. So, you know, it's a fantastic location, it's not just for the region, it's a country asset, a national asset, it's an international asset. And I think one takeaway is that you can see even through the team here this morning, from the minister's address, from our mayor's address, from the delivery of the present briefers this morning, the concept of the green, 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 and that climate change piece is driving all of us. We can become a global green harbour economy here, and all of Cork can do so, to be an exemplar in the world and a fantastic place to live and to work in.
Tim, Michael, Valerie, Patrick, thank you so much for your time here this morning. That brings our event to a close. Thanks to everybody at Cork County Council for facilitating. This is but a point on the road for Cork Harbour. Nature has provided us with a massive opportunity, and we are now only really starting to realise its true potential. By working together, by sharing common goals through common enterprise, we can unlock the real economic value, protect our environment and show why County Cork really does have it all. On behalf of the mayor of the county of Cork and all the team here, thank you so much for engaging throughout the morning. Thank you for watching and have a very good day.